All right, we have returned to open session. Let's see, at this time, let's see, is there a motion that the Board of Education open the public hearing on the 2022 budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, hearing is open.
All right, is there anything to discuss as part of the hearing?
You're looking at me, I don't have the answer for you.
You're looking at me.
I think you're looking at me and I-
Public having after the comments.
This is, Dan, this is really just an adjustment to our existing budget, and that's because of some of the COVID funds and-
I think that comes later in the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, and actually, I don't know that that's even covered by this, this is more, what is it, an opportunity for the public to speak?
Jim can give more description later.
Okay, all right, well, if there's no one to speak on this issue, is there a motion that the Board of Education adjourn the public hearing for the 2022 budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Hearing is closed.
All right, then, at this time, is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay, then, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
No.
All right, and that takes us to the superintendent's report.
All right, so it is exciting to see so many children here in the audience, and parents too, so what I want to do is introduce Kim Hefner, our principal of Hollywood School, who's going to explain why we have some students here to talk with us.
Good evening, Board of Education, I want to thank you for welcoming children back to your meetings, it's been a while since the pandemic that we've had children here to kind of show off the learning and the growth that takes place in District 96, and I am honored to present to you what is currently many members of our fifth grade class. In second grade, the curriculum has a lot to do with community involvement and citizenship. And back in second grade, Mr. Murray was their teacher, and he saw an opportunity to work with the Village of Brookfield to create an authentic learning experience that we're now seeing come to fruition, and so I'm going to introduce Mr. Ryan Murray, he's been in District 96 for seven years, and he is Hollywood's second grade teacher to share a little bit about what the difference that our current fifth graders made back in second grade.
Thank you, Kim, I want to let the kids tell the story of Candy Cane Park and everything that happened, but I will say that it is the best when the kids get any opportunity to use the skills that they're learning in the classroom, to use them outside of the classroom, to make something happen. Kids, you pay no bigger compliment to your parents, to your teachers, and to the school district when you take those skills and say, we're going to do something, and we're going to tell the story of what we did at Candy Cane Park, something that was not going to be there, that is there now because of what these kids did, really, so I want to invite them to tell that story now if we could start. Katrina, you first.
A long time ago, when we were second graders, one of our class reading-writing projects involved designing a fictional park and writing about how it could help the community.
Coincidentally, there was a real community park in Brookfield that was planned for renovation, it was Candy Cane Park.
We also just finished a classroom textbook called Changemakers, it was about how kids can work hard and bring positive changes to their communities.
We had also just finished a classroom textbook called Changemakers. Wait, we're also learning about government and citizen and social studies, it sounds like we were really busy at that time, can you see how these different pieces all are starting to fit together? And we decided to try something, let's go to Brookfield to adopt our designs for Candy Cane Park, we came up with all sorts of ideas, drew maps, and wrote our persuasive essays.
So we thought about how to represent ideas to the local government, and also, we also sent an essay to the landmark that included at least one sentence from each student.
One of the designs we also featured on author Nancy Turner's website, Move Your Own Mountain, she features kids who work for positive change in their communities.
We had lots of great ideas, including a koi pond and ice cream stand, but the idea that our class was most interested in, and the one Mr. Murray said was the most doable, was a zip line.
In June of 2019, many of us went to a super serious Parks and Recreation Board meeting, after presenting our ideas, we were allowed to sit in the big chairs and use the legos, this is student activism, we wanted a zip line.
Our presentation must have been persuasive, because after Brookfield received money for the renovation, it included a zip line in the final design, former Hollywood parent, Ms. Kim Quilty, sat on the board, but let's move on.
We got a shout out on the landmark too, and even though the pandemic delayed construction, the project was finally completed, thank goodness we didn't have to present the Parks and Recreation Board of this year.
Three years later, here we are with the zip line that we worked for, it wasn't included in the original design, but there it is, because of us. We've been invited onstage for the ribbon cutting at the Candy Cane Park grand opening, we hope all of you can join us for our food, fun, and a celebration on Saturday, May 21st, at noon.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that wonderful reason.
It's great to hear, and I appreciate the patience, too, you had to wait a little bit of an extra long time for that, so, very exciting.
Do you think you all will be the first ones to write the zip line?
We already did.
Oh, you already did? Oh my gosh, how was it?
It was fun.
Yeah, was it everything you imagined as a second grader? That's awesome.
And now you have a zip line in Hollywood, too.
Yeah. How does it compare to Hollywood's zip line?
All right, well, thank you so much for joining us tonight, I know you might have homework, or might have to get better early, so-
Really quickly, I just wanted to say, I'm like emotional about this, I'm sorry about that, it's very weird, but I'm just so impressed with you guys, with all of you, and just know that you can make a change, you're a citizen in a community, you can, if you want something, or if you want change to happen, you now know the steps to do, and I think that's really great, so, sorry. I don't know why I get emotional about these things, but I'm just really impressed.
All right, I mean, don't underestimate the power that you kids have, I mean, you can change, seriously, the future is in your hands, you can change, if you put your mind to it, you can do it, as you showed here.
You did it as second graders, you can do it forever.
Yep.
We'll get a koi pond next time, right?
Ice cream.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, and Ms. Hefner also.
And just lastly, I know all of you are now fifth graders, and your time at Hollywood is coming to the end, I wish you all the best of luck as you embark on junior high and continue to be changemakers, hopefully in this next chapter of your life as well, so, congratulations, best of luck, thank you for all that you did for the community with this park.
And please, come to the grand opening, we'll be there, and the kids have been invited onstage, and they're going to be presented with a certificate, and cut the ribbon, and hopefully they make it. All right, thank you.
Always, it seems, on to slightly less exciting items, but I did just want to update the board, I know we used to do a more regular update around student enrollment, just because we would often be sort of anticipating class size, and when we had a different policy, you'd have to vote on that, that's all different now, but it is interesting, our new student enrollment, specifically our kindergarten enrollment is very low for May 18th compared to mid-May of other years, so we right now have 122 kindergarteners registered, we have put the word out through the Village of Riverside, through the Village of Brookfield, we are just doing everything we can to kind of get that word out, signage in the community, so I guess this is as much a public service announcement to please encourage your friends and neighbors who might have kindergarten-aged children to make sure that they complete the registration process. I know our principals have speculated that perhaps not that we have a full day, that even though it wasn't really true, sometimes parents thought if they registered early, they'd have a better shot at getting more kindergarten, so, again, we're not sure why, I don't know if it is truly just lower enrollment, we don't have a sense, though, that our District 96 community has changed in terms of demographics and population, I mean, it could be an uplift in terms of maybe just not as many five-year-olds as we think, but anyway, it's somewhat of concern to us, so, again, we are really encouraging people to register, and I'll certainly keep you updated month to month on where that is. And then I know every month we do a COVID update, and this is our last regular meeting of this school year, which is hard to believe, we still have a June 1st call, which still takes place during the school year, but our last regular board meeting. I continue to share the vaccination participation rate, as you know, we've seen really minimal shifts and changes since kind of the initial push for vaccination, I would say our vaccination rates remain relatively high, though I think they're very respectable for our community in terms of our student vaccination rate. I've also continued to share the saliva screening participation update, I do just know anecdotally from our nurses and from Hampshire that, you know, because children are not to do saliva tests within 90 days of a COVID diagnosis, that that number continues to kind of shift and change some, but this is the percentage of families that are still opted in, or did not opt out, I should say, of the process. This week has probably been our most regular week that we'll have, we're still scheduled to have saliva screening next week, and our principals have shared that there's just a lot of end-of-the-year events, activities, field trips, field day, et cetera, starting to happen next week, so, again, I think we'll probably keep the saliva screening going next week, that would be the last week, as we only have two and a half weeks left of school, it wasn't scheduled to happen that very, very last week of school. But anyway, it's been, I think, a great service to our students, and to our staff, and to our community, we don't know the status about saliva screening for the coming year, it's really up to Shield, the state of Illinois, in terms of whether or not that will still be a service offered to us. Also have the COVID dashboard there, continue to look at that, I think, two weeks ago, I think we had 64 cases, and then the following week, we dropped down to 34 cases, which was encouraging to see, but again, we do feel that our trends often reflect the trends that we see in our overall community, but we were pleased to see that reduction. And then I just have a couple appreciations and thank yous, it is school nurse appreciation, I mean, I think we just missed the actual week and day, but if there's ever been a study that our school nurses need extra appreciation, it was really last week, it would be right now, this year, as we know, I think school nurses probably used to kind of work under the radar, they were taking care of a lot of minor injuries, and stomach aches, and sometimes kids just wanted to go home to see mom or dad perhaps, but the COVID period has just changed their jobs so significantly, and they have just been key, critical, kind of front stage, center stage to all of our work, and very much appreciate all of them. And I learned yesterday that tomorrow is crossing, that Prisker just announced that tomorrow is Crossing Guard Appreciation Day, so we had our principals put that word out, I think, this afternoon, and from some of the schools, saying, please, when you walk past one of your crossing guards, or walk across the street with one of your crossing guards, strong encourage children to thank their crossing guard, and appreciate their crossing guard. And then I had just one other last item, and that is that we had our annual safety meeting back on April 27th, and again, just a thanks and appreciation, we invite the fire and police from Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield to join us, and it's an opportunity for our district leadership team to just interface and talk directly about everything from sort of crisis drills to future considerations, just how we can always keep our focus on keeping our schools, our students, and our community as safe as possible, so, significant appreciation to all of them as well, and to our leadership team that continues to think of ways that interface is more and more important, and some of it's just putting names and faces together, that these are people we call on in times of crisis and emergency, but it's also nice to make those personal connections. And that is it for superintendent's report.
All right, Martha, okay, next on our agenda is the consent agenda, and realize we do not have the board secretary.
Yeah, I was going to fill Wesley's time.
Fantastic.
So I will read the consent agenda, the consent agenda contains the following items: minutes of the previous meetings, including minutes from April 6, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting, minutes from April 20, 2022 Regular Business Meeting, and the minutes of the April 20, 2022 Closed Session Meetings, the personnel report as presented, the 2022, 2023 Staff Appointments, non-union salary recommendations, 2021, 2022, approval of holidays, administrator/district office non-union support staff, the payables pre-list as of April 30, 2022, the payables pre-list as of May 18, 2022, and the keynote speaker agreement.
All right. Thanks, Martha. Okay, at this time, are there any items that a board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda for individual discussion?
I just wanted to make note that I was not physically present at the April 20, 2022 Regular Business Meeting, nor in the closed session itself, I did get an opportunity to watch what I was able to of that meeting, and of course, trust our board secretary with the accuracy of the minutes, but I'll still be prepared to vote on the consent agenda.
Okay, see, just to be clear, there's no item you would like to take out?
No, I don't need to remove it.
Okay. All right, definitely appreciate you mentioning that. All right, then, at this time, is there a motion that the board approve tonight's consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Is that okay, Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Can I just interrupt for a minute, too, related to it, so, on our personnel report, we have a new music teacher for Central School, his name is Joe Renardo, and Joe and his wife wanted to join us here tonight, I know Joe's really excited about joining us here in District 96, so, they wanted to take a moment and introduce Joe to the Board of Education.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you here.
All right, thanks, Joe, thanks for joining us.
Good night.
All right, next item on the agenda is the superintendent's salary recommendation for 2022, 2023, an action item, is there a motion that the Board of Education approve a 3.33% merit increase aligned with the merit we recently approved for all other district administrators, in addition, approve an additional 1.17% merit for the difficult decisions that kept the district in a growth mindset despite the significant challenges we face?
So moved. Second.
All right.
I'll vote yes.
What's it happen?
He's a man.
Okay, let's see, so, I believe you had-
Yeah, so the motion is on the table.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I know that, it's a little alarming that Joe is right now, but they'll move forward, I think he was just going to say hello. Wesley, as Personnel Committee Chair, has a memo that he would like to share in regards to this, so I'm just going to read it on behalf of Wesley, and I'll try to do it as quickly as I can, but I think this is a really nice memo to highlight why we're making this move tonight. "To my fellow BOE members, the past two years have taken us all on a tumultuous journey, along with the entire world, our local community grappled with the need to make any uncertain decisions with uncertain guidance, to make many uncertain decisions with uncertain guidance. Our district was forced to make difficult decisions about how we keep our students, staff, and community safe while simultaneously continuing to educate our children. There are many debates on what and how we should take action. Decisions and execution were imperfect. The district collectively learned and adapted as necessary. Once a decision to take action was made, everyone in the district did their part to execute the plans put in place. While there is still no declaration that this global pandemic is over, our schools are in the most normal state they have seen over the past two years. This is due to the collaborative effort everyone put in to achieve our ultimate objective, to do what is best for the students of District 96. With our last regular business meeting of the school year, the board would like to take this opportunity to recognize the significant role our superintendent took in navigating us through the last two school years. Martha was required to make many difficult decisions, too many to list out tonight. Despite the significant challenges we faced, this district showed clear growth in our strategic objectives. To highlight a few key examples, so we will list a few out, we completed multiple facility upgrades that were critical to our expiring five-year strategic plan. We completed contract negotiations with the REC to provide security, stability, continued support for professional development, identify opportunities to continue enhancing the district's culture, and enhance the communication engagement with the broader District 96 community. We elected to take on the critical task of developing a new strategic plan that will guide our decisions for the next five years, and we did this in a fully virtual environment. After approving this new strategic plan, Martha swiftly put the plan in motion by setting objective owners and creating committees to assess the primary goals of each objective. The district has already seen significant progress in bringing this new plan to life and achieved one major milestone in assessing the need for full-day kindergarten. This work resulted in the recent board approval of the committee recommendation to implement full-day kindergarten for the 22, 23 school year. As Personnel Committee Chair, I recommend a merit raise that rewards significant efforts and difficult decisions over the past two years. My recommendation to the board, as Dan already mentioned, is to approve a 3.33 merit increase aligned with the merit we recently approved for all other district administrators. I am recommending approval of an additional 1.17 merit for the difficult decisions that kept the district in a growth mindset despite the significant challenges we face. This district did not simply survive the pandemic, we continue to grow and achieve our goals despite the pandemic due to the leadership Martha provided throughout the past two years. While I cannot attend tonight's meeting and formally vote on this recommendation, I fully support this memo's 4.5% aggregate increase." That's from Wesley.
All right, any further, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Just going to say, any further discussions?
Well, I was going to say, even though Wesley wrote it, I mean, I'm in full agreement with this, I mean, you have done, I mean, we have done so much in the last two years despite all the challenges and obstacles that have been thrown our way, so, fully support this.
Yeah, I fully second that, I appreciate your leadership through this last few years, and I think all the things that we have achieved and continue to do just are directly related to your just dedication and your leadership, and thank you so much for everything.
I agree as well, definitely agree.
We all agree.
All right, well, all that said, if there's nothing else, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And I'll just say, you know, I had to wait for the vote, but, thank you, I mean, your acknowledgement, you know, means a lot, I have said all along, and I continue to say, this was absolutely a team effort, this was not me, this was our leadership team, this was each and every teacher in this district, this was our parents and our students, right? I mean, this is our parents and our students trusting us that we had created a safe enough environment for children to come to school, and I know last year we put them through the kind of the crazy hybrid, and then back everybody in person, this year we said, let's all come back and let's make school as normal as possible, and that was a feat, too, and I think a lot of our staff would say this has been the hardest year of all of it, I guess it's only been two-plus years, but it does feel like it's been many more than that, but I just, I want to thank you, your comments mean a lot, certainly it has not been easy, but, you know, signing up for taking care of students, their safety, well-being, and their learning, whether in a global pandemic or not, is indeed the job that I took on as superintendent, and I just, I greatly appreciate all of you, and I greatly appreciate this community, and certainly the leadership team that I have the opportunity to work alongside every day, so, thank you.
Do I come on a clap or something? I don't know, okay?
Okay. Next on the agenda, Riverside Education Council. There's not appear to be anyone here from there tonight, and we get to board member comments.
I'm first up, Dan, in your packet, there's the agenda for-
From switched.
Yes, we could jump there, but it might be a comment about the-
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I get them switched around often myself, so it's all good, well, if no board member comments, then we will get to the Facilities Committee, Committee reports, and Facilities Committee is first up, go ahead, Joel.
Now I'm really confused. We have had two Facility Advisory Meetings since the last board meeting, one was more formal, which you have the agenda in front of you, and that was additional discussion about Central Hauser and Blythe Park, and at Central Hauser, the architect is going to be continuing to do some analysis and development, some research into the green surface, the play surface, being artificial turf or natural, and they're developing different options, and will present those at some point in the future, there was also some traffic study that needed to be worked on, and which is, the additional information is still in development, which is why we do not have it yet, one of the issues with traffic was that we were in the middle of COVID and spring break, so they needed extra time to allow traffic to go to its normal school day routine. We're also going to hit a couple other items as we move forward, and I think I just want to save any Hauser Auditorium for a later agenda item, if we could, and then Blythe Park is continuing to go through development as well, but I think we have, that's really just an update later on.
Yes, we have both new business and old business.
Sorry, that's why I feel like I'm trying to look ahead too much.
Okay. Don't worry, Joel, we'll get back to you on the others.
Thank you.
You're famous tonight. All right, if nothing else from Facilities, or at least for now, we will go next to the Finance Committee.
So, no, there's nothing tonight, but just to, at least, lay the groundwork for upcoming meetings, we are going to be talking about looking at budget projections for the next fiscal year coming up, we're also going to be taking, also I've asked Jim, and we're going to be taking a look at sort of the projections, their 10-year trip projections, taking into consideration full-day kindergarten, the Blythe Park addition, I mean, not the addition, but the renovations of Blythe Park, the Hauser Auditorium, et cetera. I'm also going to, I've also asked him to start, and this is, I just want to throw this out there, the last several years, our 10-years projections have been always very conservative, and our revenue, especially on the revenue side, and so, I've asked him to start looking at more realistic, still take the conservative role, but look at the more realistic of what we are, what we actually bring in, because we've been putting in two-plus million dollars aside a year for the last several years, and I think we need to start thinking about our, how we spend our money, and look at like the long-range projections, and seeing how we can possibly better use that money, possibly without having to worry about us breaking that 40% mark 10 years down the road, because I do think, based on where we're going right now, we are going to far exceed the 40% mark in the past 10 years, so, we're going to be looking at sort of like conservative and more realistic numbers going forward.
All right, thanks for that update, all right, and next, we will move to the Education Committee.
Nothing to report, we met this week, the Education Committee met this week, talking about upcoming curricular reviews, and I know we have the K-5 math recommendation that will be coming up.
June meeting, yeah.
All right, Wes is not here, so nothing from the Personnel Committee, I'm assuming.
He didn't tell me to say anything.
All right, and last is the Policy Committee.
Back to last, I was first for one, actually have an update, so, hot off the presses, Press Issue 109, so just when I said I felt like I didn't have much to do, they delivered. So, just yesterday, Kathy and I joined the press webinar, just high-level, talking, you know, kind of spring cleaning, housekeeping- know, kind of spring cleaning, housekeeping-type issue. Some of the bundles include things like anaphylaxis management, the Healthcare Right of Conscious Act, and just other miscellaneous updates. So, mostly five-year review stuff. And we, the committee is meeting on Friday, and then hopefully, we will include it on the June, I think it's like the June 1st COW for a first read. So, just kind of putting that on everybody's radar, but seems fairly straightforward, all things considered, specifically coming off of the last issue.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. All right, and then that takes us to Old Business. Joel, you're up again. The first thing listed here is Hauser Auditorium MOU.
Thank you.
Is there a motion that the Board of Education authorize the architect to provide professional services for the auditorium upgrade and replacement of lighting and sound system for Hauser Junior High School as presented?
Second.
All right, now we can have discussion. So, it looks like we have a presentation here.
It's more going to be related to the Blythe than the Central Hauser campus. But the Hauser Auditorium is an old business action. There's certainly, the architects are here if you have any questions about the auditorium project specifically.
But this is the same MOU we saw--
Right, right, right.
This is the second reading, essentially, and this, this has both the MOU and then three different reports regarding code considerations that would come into play when we do any work there. As you know, we have to do code updates. Anytime we hit a certain threshold of expense and/or scope of work within the space, there's also reports on electrical improvements and audiovisual. And Dan, I know you, I'll pick on you, but noting the higher-than-expected cost of the potential improvements, and as we discussed before, there's a good, better, best, and good is basically the minimum necessary to bring the space up to good usability, whereas better adds in AV improvements, both power for the AV plus some equipment. And then best was a number of other lighting and more nice-to-have items. We know we've heard in the past that the system is at the end of its lifespan, just in terms of technology updates, and then also, a lot of it's electrical. It's expensive, but it's essentially, every time we open something up, it's just a lot of effort by contractors, it's labor. So, labor and equipment, and that's where the estimate sits right now. And we need to engage DLA to get the plans ready, and DLA and their consultants to have these plans ready so that we can have the improvements in a timely basis next spring, I believe.
So, labor, equipment, and consumables, I would assume, are getting harder to find and more expensive for things like bulbs and replacement parts or anything for this equipment?
The replacement parts are hard to find. It's not uncommon that things become obsolete just because manufacturers stop making them, and then you're stuck going to the secondary market, which is just, it's just hit or miss. The report notes a number of areas where the current electrical equipment is, it's not accessed the best way, so that would be improved as well. For example, up in the ceiling, they're climbing on beams rather than, rather than better ways of getting at things. And then, I kind of misspoke there, this is, this has, we would be looking at construction in summer of 2023, but we want to initiate this work partially to make sure that we get all of a grant from the state.
So, by initiating this now, are we locking in costs? Because I know that's been definitely a concern of mine, that the costs on this have gone up considerably since we first started discussing it.
No, because the plans would not be complete for lock, elements could be locked in if we pre-purchased equipment. I know that was discussed. I don't know if that's still as good of an idea as it once was, but at this point, this MOU is specifically for the architects and the design services.
All right. Any further questions on this? Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Varzadi?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next is the approval of the budget amendment. Is there a motion of the Board of Education approve the budget amendment as presented? No move.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion on this, this issue? It looks like it's just me, or it's been before us a few times.
I think we've discussed aspects of it a couple times, but, and I, sorry, I misspoke at least a few times today, but this is amendment, it adjusts our, the originally approved budget to capture additional--
Right.
Essers money, some other expenses.
Yeah, exactly. It's just an adjustment to--
And it requires a formal hearing and specific board action because of the amount, the variation of the amount, right, Jim?
Right.
Any further discussion on this item?
Nope.
All right, ready to vote. All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Varzadi?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, then next, that brings us to New Business. First item listed here is the EdRed proposed dues restructuring. I think it's noted that EdRed is in the name of what, equity? They're trying to change the amounts that are paid, decoupling it from size of the system to more, what, just the ability to fund balance?
Yeah, yeah, your overall revenues and the--
Revenues, okay.
Yeah.
And I guess the impact to us is not tremendous, is my understanding.
But it's a shift, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Well, I will ask the question, and Stephanie, maybe you have answers on this. Are we getting value from EdRed?
I mean, I don't know if we're getting value in the sense that perhaps we're not, you know, as an EdRed liaison, perhaps there are missed opportunities or more that I, you know, could be doing, but, you know, and I know in the past, you know, it's kind of ebbed and flowed, and I know they have, I believe, like a new maybe director or somebody who oversees it. Perhaps there's been some changes or enhancements, but I can't, you know, if other than good stewardship and being part of this community that we have derived much. I don't know, what are your thoughts? But again, maybe there's missed opportunities that I'm just not fully being cognizant of on behalf of the Board.
Yeah, I think it's, well, so it's, Stephanie, I, you know, I think it's, we support the organization existing to support suburban school districts, you know, sort of when and where legislative issues become critical to our sort of overall well-being. And when we've called on them, they've been very helpful, whether it's been potential property tax issues, or I know we reached out to them related to some of the facility grants issues, again, just to help us kind of navigate some of what's going on in Springfield. So, yeah, I mean, I did want to bring, it's not an organization that we interface sort of, you know, on a very regular basis. They do hold a monthly meeting. I've been to a few of them. I think if there's not a topic of, you know, sort of specific interest to us at the time, it's maybe just as valuable to be able to read their minutes and kind of the overview of it. So, I think many of our suburban school district peers belong to EdRed. It's, I think, again, the support of the organization, and then it's kind of a, they're there when you need them, I think, too. It's not a lot of money, but it is, it is a shift and an increase from where we've been.
This chart, we're what, we have the elementary between 1 and 199 students?
Yeah, and Tier 4.
And Tier 4.
So, we'd be paying an extra, we'd be paying an extra $350.
Yeah.
And their communications have generally, at least in my opinion, have been relatively focused. I actually would rather read their material than some from ISBE. I think they're a little bit more in tune with some of the legislative side of things, but that's just an opinion.
Yeah, I always appreciate the communications, too.
Yeah, I mean, I'll watch even something more, like their YouTube videos on their legislative updates, just quick little five-minute summary videos, that's the new Bridgette, Bridgette is her name, has been doing. So, I found those just to be kind of easy, digestible, you know, ways to take in the material if I wasn't able to attend the meeting, for example. Yeah, I'm not sure what our normal process would have been to approve this, if it was something that just--
Probably would have been consent agenda. Yeah.
And, I don't know that.
Yeah. And I would say if there's not really objection to it, that we'd probably put under consent agenda for next month and just go ahead and assume that we will probably get forward an approval. And it's really helpful just to hear that as Board Members, you receive those same communications, emails, updates, et cetera, and that they, you do find them informative and helpful. So, I think that says a lot, too.
I always go to my spam, but I don't know, there's always something about, I'm just, always goes to my spam, but I find them.
Martha, do you know offhand how much we pay for ISB, or ISBE?
The I, the--
IASB, I'm sorry, IASB.
I don't know offhand, I'd have to look that up, yeah. I can find that out, though, and bring that back.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Next then is Facility Considerations.
First topic on there is projections. So, our Finance Committee will have a planning meeting next Wednesday, and we'll update the projections from that, and have them ready for the COW meeting. But a couple of things I wanted to mention is, this year, we're already $1 million ahead of our full-year budget for revenues, and $600,000 of that is the property tax, which doesn't go down, so that hopefully will be carried forward. So, it looks like we would at least be adding $1 million to fund balance at the end of this year, so I'll work all that into the projections, and have an update for you at the COW meeting.
All right. Thanks, Jim. And Blythe Park renovation update?
So, we have Blythe Park renovation update and the Central Hauser prioritization. Obviously, DLA and partners have been working on both projects and kind of just continuing to bring more information for the Board to consider. I think you want to reverse them a little bit, right? Which, does anybody have any objection? I mean, it's all under our kind of facilities update, facility considerations, here's the agenda item, but I know we have a traffic engineer, right, who's, who may move the process. Would be easier to go first, right? Yeah, talk about Central Hauser, so--
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Get us on the right slide. Long report. Here we are. So, this is the site plan that we looked at last board meeting. I just want to add that we met with the Hauser administration and PE teachers, and Martha not speak for you, but I think you met with Jessica France about the parking requirements and leniency around that. So, all that to say is that we're going to continue to develop that, this plan, and make sure that we're meeting all the needs of both Central and Hauser. And so, with this, we wanted to invite Sarah, our traffic engineer, who I think most of you have met before, in our Ames Development Project, and talk a little bit about some of the observations that we've seen that are forming the design.
And I have to say, Sarah, we haven't seen each other since before the pandemic. Good to see you. But also, I think of you speaking more to the village and to zoning and planning, so I don't know if the Board of Education has had an opportunity to meet--
I was wondering.
--Sarah before.
I don't think so.
I see some familiar faces, or maybe some overlap between those bodies, which is why, but yes, it's great to be here, speaking to you all, and I know your time is precious, so I'll be relatively brief, but I'm happy to stay as long as you want to answer questions that you may have about the high-level overview that I'll give you of our work so far. So, as Ryan mentioned, we worked with the district with the master plan for Ames. We've worked for elementary and high schools all around the region, and we always begin by going out and observing how the transportation conditions are operating to look at congestion and safety, are really the two main things that we're concerned about. And so, what we typically see is that after the dismissal bell, because dismissal tends to have the most congestion, because all of the parents and guardians line up at once and wait for those students to release, so it's the largest concentration of vehicles. After the dismissal bell, we're used to seeing that congestion mostly clear within seven to 10 minutes. When we were working at Ames, we saw a lot more congestion, it was 15 to 20 minutes, and so we wanted to come up with some solutions to dissipate that congestion sooner. Here at Central Hauser, I know you have the two dismissals, but during both of those periods, it was within that expected range of congestion. Where we saw opportunities for more improvement was in the safety realm. So, a lot of the pickup and drop-off for Central, the vast majority actually happens on Woodside, which is not fully in keeping with the intended plan for pickup and drop-off. There was not much activity. We saw at most four vehicles at a time in that back parking lot to do pickup and drop-off. So, there was a large concentration of cars on Woodside, which, as you know, operates with a one-way scheme during school hours. And because there was a large grouping of those cars near the door at Central, the students are younger, parents want to be closer, sometimes get out of their cars, we saw a lot of double parking there. And so, that was a concern for us, because we don't like to see students walking between cars to get to cars. It's not a safe condition. We also saw, mostly in the morning, some wrong-way travel on Woodside. I, as a transportation professional, I prefer to see good expectation management, so the drivers are compliant with safety expectations, and I don't love the temporary one-way condition, because I think it's contrary to typical driver expectation. In Woodside's case, the signage is not great. There's one faded sign that says, "No left turn during school hours." It's not specific as to what those hours are, so that someone who's not connected to the school community may not know what they are. And it's also a weird way to say one-way traffic here. There was much better signage near Ames, it was a much shorter segment. So, what we observed is that there was one vehicle that drove the wrong way the full length of Woodside, along school frontage, and there was also a vehicle we saw come to turn left into that northernmost access driveway, and there was a near-miss crash that happened during our observations. So, that's a safety concern that we have, because you have students crossing that street, and you want pedestrians to be able to expect which direction they have to look for traffic. So, something you will see in our recommendations is, at a minimum, better signage, and to the extent that the district thinks appropriate, perhaps a conversation with the village about whether that temporary one-way designation is a good fit for a wide street with a long length like Woodside. And then, the one other safety thing that we noted that is much easier to manage is for the Hauser students, there's not a clear-marked crossing across Woodside, but pickup and drop-off happens on both sides of the street. There's also double parking there, where because those students are older, there's a lot of quick loading and unloading, where parents will pull up, double park, get a student in or out, and then zip along, and traffic goes around them. And so, that conflict management is not a best practice that we like to see. At a minimum, we'd like to see a crosswalk, which I can't see it very well from this distance, but maybe you guys have a better view of the screen, that there is a crosswalk marked on DLA's plan. We would also recommend consideration of a corner, a curb bump-out. If you're familiar, is where the curb extends to kind of bookend the parking and meet that crosswalk, so that the distance that pedestrians have to cross is shorter. It also communicates to drivers when they see that narrowing of the pavement, it manages their speed better. And so, it's a good safety metric in that way. So, that's something we would suggest. Because I've started talking about some of our recommendations, I'll get into some others. Because I've started talking about some of our recommendations, I'll get into some others, the better layout of the rear parking lot, I think will be a great start for encouraging parents to do pickup and drop-off there, and that can be supported with communication and education to parents that that's really a desirable place to do pickup, drop-off. Through that parking lot, there are marked crosswalks, carrying students from the Aitkinside mid-block crossing to the front door, and we talked about the possibility that that could be designed as what we call raised crosswalks. It's kind of a speed hump with a flat top that has the width of a crosswalk, so that the students that are walking through are elevated, much more visible when they're walking through a car space, and then there's also that slowing element for cars that are crossing over, for improved safety, that would be an option. And then we would also suggest consideration of narrowing the driveways. All of these driveways are one-way, and so our industry best practice would suggest a fourteen-foot width, that would require a variance, because the village requires a minimum eighteen feet. But the shorter distance we can encourage where pedestrians and vehicles intermingle, the better the safety condition. And I think that touches on all of the items that we discussed, and so these are things that will be memorialized in a brief memo that we'll put together, expressing the observations that we saw, the things that we think should be addressed, and then how it connects to the master plan once that's final, and so I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Just one thought here, you mentioned that there were only a small number of cars coming to the back of the school. I was under the impression that we had an organized drop-off there, and that I think that came as part of a previous traffic study.
It is, I think what she's saying is just a lot of people don't opt to use it.
Really?
We've had that, yes.
I thought it was by grade.
It is by grade, yeah.
You don't have to do it.
And that can be difficult to enforce at schools too, because some parents have students in third grade below and fourth, fifth.
I use it though. I mean, the thing about the way it currently is, is you're dropping your kid off, and then they're walking through a parking lot. So I think a lot of people, even though they're encouraged to use it, don't feel comfortable using it, because, you know, we're dropping off way outside of the school, and they're just literally walking through a parking lot that's not very well-marked, or, you know, so I think it's not the safest.
Right, and DLA's designed a nice curbside space where there's passenger-side loading, which is also what we like to see, to get kids in and out of the car, direct from vehicle to sidewalk, so they're not passing through a vehicle space.
So this design looks more like what's, what was built at Ames, with driving to the school, to in the vicinity of the school with that drop-off area, and then they drive back out the parking lot.
Exactly, and so I think based on, there are space constraints in Riverside, I don't have to tell you guys that, the, and also the fact is that parents will find the most convenient place to pick up and drop off. You can provide direction, but unlike, say, school buses, which you can very carefully curate where they park and for how long and so on, parents will find a place that is convenient for them, and so you want to create a design that is supportive of that, which this rear parking lot will help to do, while also communicating and messaging what the desired intent is, and then sometimes you have to have people out there managing it. At Ames, I believe that's part of clearing the traffic out, if I'm not mistaken, how that ended up being executed on top of the design, and sometimes you need to go out there and have somebody who's telling parents they can't double park in the traveling.
And we do have parents, our staff, I remember, that manage that back drop-off, but it's interesting that, you know, the observation is it's not well-used, I think, to hear kind of your parent perspective on that, the reasons why maybe it's not.
It's been a long time since I had children at Central, but I know that I used it for drop-off a lot, because I live on that side of the tracks, it was just very easy, but for pickup, I never went back there, because there's like kids, kids in cars everywhere, it just felt, you know.
I have a question, did you look at parking and pickup and drop-off on Park and on Tim Barkley's, like around?
So we had two to three people out there doing observations, even with that many people, we stayed pretty close to the school, since as I mentioned, it happens very fast.
Right, right.
So I'm aware that there is some pickup and drop-off that happens a little further away, but that was not the core of our observations.
I just know that is a big pickup and drop-off location.
Further, further away, yeah, from the school, yeah.
By the church, so like over there and that corner over there.
Would I be correct in assuming that's more affiliated with Hauser, because those students may walk longer distances than the younger students?
I'd probably, as personal experience, I use that, I pick up and drop off on rainy days there, so I do think it's mostly Hauser kids.
Sure.
And is that then, is that today, but is that more evidence of parents finding a way, because if they're a little bit further away, they can drop their child off and then zip away without going through the gauntlet of Aitkinside or the back parking lot?
Yes, and to be honest, there's probably not a big design strategy for changing that.
Right.
It's that we simply want to make sure that the design promotes the transportation safety, primarily the pedestrian safety that is necessary to protect students.
Because I could tell you, like, I could tell you from experience and just from observation, everyone who drops it off, then they do, the kids all then walk to that stoplight and do cross at that point.
Sure.
Then no one goes, like, very few people go drop their kids off.
Right. So the idea of change, I really appreciate what you said about how it's a one-way and a two-way, and I mean, I'm a fifteen-year resident, my kids have gone to this campus, I still don't know what the time that it switches, I have no idea, and I just usually avoid it, because I'm like, I'll just go around the block, because I don't know, so I think that's something like really important, that we should figure out, a better way.
Well, to be fair, I guess it changes sometimes year to year, so I don't know that we could put it on a sign and on a permit.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know, I just, I know that that is a cut-through to get out of, there's not many ways to get in and out of Riverside, and that is one easy way to get, you know. So I think, you know, not everybody is part of the school community, as you mentioned, and I've always been, I've always seen people going the wrong way, I've always felt that it was a dangerous, dangerous way to proceed, so, I mean, working with the village, is that something that's actually like doable to like find a solution for? Is, like, is there a good solution?
Is it just signage right now? Now, I know, my experience is at Hollywood, it's a much shorter, but I know, I don't know if it's the field police, or who puts out that, there's like a physical blockade that's put out that is used like for block parties at the end of a street, and then it's kind of moved to the side.
I think we have permission from the village to do that.
Yeah, and again, I don't know who goes out there and physically moves it every day at the other.
But the custodians, yeah.
But then there are times where the blockade is moved, but you look and all the cars are parked the other way, because there's still people in the building that haven't left, so it's a very, just like, so as a driver, I'm thinking, this is one way, because all these cars are, you know, I just think, I think it needs to be solved, so I'm happy to hear that.
Is your, what is, so I'm confused about what your ultimate suggestion for that is. Is it to remain one-way all the time for consistency, or is it because it's a wide street to allow it to be two-way?
So you're right, I didn't give you a concrete suggestion, and part of the reason is that at Ames, we brought up the idea of how that time-related configuration can be confusing. It's a much shorter segment at age, similar to what you said for Hollywood, and the village preferred to maintain it as a switch from one-way to two-way. So I don't know how that conversation would go to broach the topic, but we saw concrete safety concerns that I think are valid for the district to bring to village staff to have a conversation about it. I'll also say that the village has other traffic studies that have memorialized that as how that street operates, which probably creates a bit of a conflict of advice, of professional advice.
Yeah, thanks, Shul, for asking that, because that's kind of the question I was getting at, like, what is the best option, what were you saying?
Well, the challenge is, is that if you try and make, sorry, speaking for the village, now I'm not speaking for them, but I can imagine the conversation going something like, why is it one-way all the time when there's no kids out there? And so that's, that's going to be part of the challenge.
Right, and I, I mean, I, like you said, we don't know the solution, but I think it's very important that we at least address safety concerns, and even that crosswalk down on that side, on Woodside, I always think for pedestrians, like, you never, like, I don't know if it's two-way or one-way, and like, are kids looking to write, you know, like, that, that crosswalk is always seems like, I've seen several near-misses in that crosswalk, so I, I just think, I'm glad we're talking about this, because I think there are real safety concerns that we should be addressing.
If the choice is between, is it one-way all the time or two-way all the time, it's my professional opinion that the dimension of that street is more appropriate for two-way travel. It's wide enough where you can have parking lanes on both sides, and comfortable lane widths for two lanes of travel, and so what you can get into when you have two one-way lanes of travel and a crosswalk is what we call a multi-threat crossing, where if you can imagine a student walking out of Hauser, we add this new crosswalk, let's say, even if we have the bump-outs to extend to the crosswalk, the northbound vehicle in the lane closest to Hauser sees that student, and they start to cross the street. There's somebody coming northbound in the lane next to them, they may not see that student, because there's a car there blocking their view, and the student can't see the car, and so it can result in a crash, and a severe one, because it's a vehicle and a pedestrian. So I think it's better as a two-way street to manage speeds and visibility for crossings.
And I guess the issue we run into there is that we have, however long, a tradition of parents getting used to at drop-off or pickup time, having those two lanes, oftentimes, as you mentioned, for double parking, and that would be, that would be tough to fight against.
Well, it was, it was made into, it was probably originally a two-way street, and it was made one-way to address another perceived issue at some point.
No, I mean, listen, the thing is, the bottom line is safety, we have to focus on safety, and that means changing behaviors, we have to change behaviors, but I mean, the end goal is safety, so just because we do something, we've done something.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but at the same time, it is something that's not solely up to us.
No, I'm not, but I can't imagine the village, if we go to the village, with like saying this is addressing a safety concern, and we're, I mean, there's.
Something I'm sure they'd be willing to listen to, but as she had mentioned, they have their own traffic studies that have it as its current configuration, but it's, I'm not, I don't want to, you know, pour cold water on this discussion going in, I'm somewhat fearful though, that it might not have a good result, or at least that we would be able to get much of anywhere with it if we suggested a change.
Well, I think if anything, we can at least improve signage, and.
I agree.
You know, there has to be, there has to be a way to improve it, because as you've stated, there's a lot of safety concerns, I think every parent who's ever dropped off in front of Central Hauser has seen a near-miss, has seen accidents, has seen, I mean, I've seen, yeah, several cars hitting each other in front of there at pickup or drop-off, drop-off. I mean, it's just.
It is, yeah, it's very chaotic.
It needs to be addressed, and I'm happy to hear that we're looking at that.
I definitely see, there's got to be a way to utilize the back, because again, I'm really surprised, because when I had a child in Central, I always remember going back that way, especially when they were younger, when they had that grade assignment, just because, yeah, that made too much sense, to avoid all that harriness of a pickup or drop-off on Woodside, you know, why wouldn't you want to avoid that?
Yeah.
You followed the rules.
So we, we go out there and we robustly observe for generally a single day, you guys are out there constantly, and so your insight and what you observe as it changes day to day is very valuable to us. What I can say that we saw is, the doors at Central opened at about eight oh five in the morning, and a lot of parents wanted to park and walk with their students, of course, that can be influenced by weather, maybe how early in the year it is as they gain their comfort zone, and so then up until those doors opened at eight oh five, there was a lot of street presence of parent vehicles on Woodside, because most of the students entered at that front door, so that may be part of the influence, is just that gathering of people before the doors are open. In the afternoon, it's a little harder to explain.
Well, something you said too, is that Hollywood, I mean, the volume's a lot less at Hollywood, but they do have somebody out there basically getting the kids out, I mean, because it's, you can't, it's not a two-way street, I mean, but they have somebody getting their out, I mean, there is going, I mean, I think this is a good starting point, I think it's going to address a lot, but we have to like sort of start thinking, we're going to be doing things differently, and so.
I think that's the whole point, right?
Exactly.
And we do, we have a lot of staff that we pay for before and after-school supervision out on the, whether it's literally standing there with their crossing sign, or just kind of helping kids keep moving, but, and we're certainly willing to, and that's important, I think that will always be part of the equation, even if that's what we found at Ames, right? We still need staff who are moving that process.
Same thing at Blythe.
Yeah, 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 it's really true everywhere, right? It does take adults, and we've had nice support from our local police as well, but I think there, you know, what's intriguing are maybe some structural changes that could just improve it also, yeah.
Anything else I can answer for you?
One last thing. You noted that at Ames, it was, there was probably an absurdly long time of concentration of traffic and people, but at Hauser and Central, you thought it was relatively normal, seven to ten minutes. Just, there's always a comment that people feel like it's, it's too much, and you're saying it is relatively normal, this is to be expected, that based on school, those doors open, that's when we're going to see a whole bunch of people, because that's when they can get in the building.
Yes, I will add the context that we were there on a day that it was a little drizzly, but walkable. On a bad weather day, it's going to be nuts, and that's why when you go to the mall, it's hard to park on December twenty-third, because building to that ultimate condition is not practical. So I'm sure there are days that the congestion is worse than I just noted, but we had a day that was not a sunny, beautiful day for everybody to bike to school, and we still saw that range of dissipation. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Right.
There's more, there's, sorry, we're continuing on with the silly.
There is more, yes. There is more, so we're going from Central, we're going to Blythe.
Well, we wanted to stick with Central.
Oh, we're sticking with Central, sorry.
The second part of what we wanted to discuss with Central, Central was a follow-up on our natural grass versus turf. We invited Jason, our civil engineer, who has designed and constructed many of these fields, both types, to give a comparison, and so in the interest of gathering more information, giving you more data in terms of infiltration rates, I don't want to steal a show from Jason, but also costs, we wanted to, you know, have a little presentation, so I'll come by Jason.
Jason, we also haven't seen each other since prior to the pandemic.
I know.
So the Ames project was sort of, as you all recall, Barry, we were deep in the thick of that, and.
There was a few meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
A few meetings there.
Good to see you too.
So yeah, Jason Green, WT Group, and like Ryan said, I've designed a lot of both types of fields, and I try to stay unbiased towards one or the other, I think there's a time and a place for both, so I think that maybe is a good thing. Fifty, I've designed over fifty synthetic turf fields, and hundreds of natural grass fields. And I've, I've been doing that for about twenty years, my first synthetic turf field was two thousand and two, so about twenty years I've been doing those, and then natural grass before and since. So, so I understand, I understand your predicament and your, your challenge right now to weigh the pros and the cons of both. I've been part of different districts' reviews of the options, School District Two-Eleven probably did the most comprehensive review in roughly two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, I think they, they did a study, before they elected to go with synthetic turf at their, at their high schools. Show you, show you a little bit of the. Show you a little bit of the, of the slide. On the left side, the left column, I'll call it, is a natural grass section. So if you look at the, the image at the top left, that's a natural grass section and how we would propose to drain it. I have some show and tell items, one for each side. And those, those replace a four-inch underdrain. So the, the circular pipe that you see at Home Depot, the corrugations, and it's, it's slotted so that it's perforated. This has got the same drainage characteristics as that. And we use it in both natural grass and synthetic turf fields.
Does it go in like this or does it go in like that?
So it goes in sideways, which is like this, on natural grass fields and on synthetic turf fields, it gets placed on, on its side. And the reason is, in natural grass, the, the head pressure or the, the column of water pressure is what pushes it through. So in natural grass, as you see in the top left, that pressure gets the water to move laterally better and also requires a smaller trench to, to place it into the soil. And I'll try not to jump ahead to synthetic turf, I'll stay on natural grass. But one of the big challenges, especially in Cook County, is that 99% of the county is, the soils are comprised of heavy clays. Heavy clay is infamous for not draining very well. It usually drains roughly, well, we have a number here, too many zeros to see, 0.005 inches per hour, but it's usually like, that equates to an inch per week or an inch per two weeks. So it's very, very slow. It's practically zero. Water will, the grass would absorb more water than it would infiltrate, it's so slow. And that's, we, we have soils reports for the pavement areas. We see that they're underlined by clay. Looking at the field, we can tell pretty much it's clay. It's, this is not the 1% out of the 99 of Cook County that has, you know, good draining soil. So we're afraid that the, the soil that's out there is, is not good for just allowing percolation of water back into the aquifer. So you'll see that as one of the items, the line items up there, the 289,000, that line item would be for replacing the topsoil with new topsoil. So hauling that topsoil away, bringing in new topsoil, not from Cook County, McHenry or, or other color counties that have good free draining soil, and then that topsoil would allow for, for drainage. Now, we're still going to have the clays underneath it, so it's going to hit that clay and it's not going to go anywhere. And that's why the drainage, the drainage piping, so that it can get through the topsoil and then these pipes, I'll call them pipes, these underdrains would convey the water to a collector pipe where it can be drained away. These, these, this drainage can work too well. So in the summer months, when you have drought conditions, you could get burnout, grass burnouts over these trenches where the, where the drains are. And so then you irrigate and now you're irrigating and the water is going straight through the soil into the drains and, and being drained away. And obviously you're paying for that water just to, to lose it. So as you can imagine, there's, there's a paradox here. What do we, do we want to irrigate or do we want it to be wet or not? The answer is, we want it to be just wet enough all the time. So what we do is we mix in, and we have one of these, but I think everybody's seen this product before. It's called Turfis and it's the product that you see at skinned infield of ball fields. So this is, they'll put this down to dry out the infield before a baseball game. And what we do is we mix 20% of that to 80% of the topsoil and it does two things. Number one is it keeps the topsoil aerated so that water can drain through better in a flood condition or a rain condition. But it also absorbs water and it releases it back into the roots so that during a drought condition, it'll actually feed the roots and keep the grass from burning out over the trenches. So that's, obviously all these things are adding up to cost. You're hauling in, you're hauling away soils, you're hauling new soils in, you're mixing this in with it and there's no way, nobody, no sod grower has Turfis-treated soil. And you always get a little bit of soil that comes in with your sod. So when we do this, we have to do, we have to grow this, the grass from seed. So the timing of that is at least a season, sometimes two seasons, to grow a, a good stand of grass that's ready for the foot traffic. And if we let people on there too soon, it'll, they'll just destroy it. So those are some of the challenges with the natural grass side, so...
Does that ever need to be, because we bring in topsoil and we're mixing out, is that something we have to do every year then? Or like maybe not every year, but like on a certain cycle?
Yeah, not annually, but there'd be sometimes, you know, natural grass kind of develops divots, so there will be some top dressing. It should be pretty minimal.
Okay.
One of the things that I, we would recommend doing, right now the field's just too flat. So if we did a natural grass field, we would intentionally create a crown so that the middle of the field was high and it would promote surface drainage to the sides and the, the underdrains would follow that pattern to, to help below grade draw the water to the sidelines where it can get picked up by larger pipes. So we would improve, we would be less gopher holes because of that, but there still would be some maintenance, more maintenance definitely with the natural grass. And that's included in the, in the slide as well.
So I know, I know one thing that, that some of the folks who are, who made presentations in favor of natural turf would, would mention that something that we're missing on here is at the end, we talk about a 20-year maintenance period for, for averaging out costs. Now, at, at the end of that 20-year period or whatever the useful life would be of the turf field, I, I assume at some point we're going to be, the, in some future board, hopefully not us, would be paying for replacing a turf field and hole, whereas at least in theory, the thought would be a natural grass surface would in perpetuity perhaps never need replacement because ground and grass are always there. And tell me how I'm wrong.
So I'll start with the synthetic turf briefly. Has a eight-year warranty is the industry standard and different manufacturers might be a little different. Some may offer 10, you know, but standard, usually it's eight years. But they all say that you can get more than that time. That's just our warranty. Whatever you get above that is kind of, you know, gravy, if you will. And that's with heavy traffic. So they're basically, in this climate, they're allowing 10 months of the year during daylight hours and even then some, constant use. And that's, that's what the warranty is based on. So that's a lot of, a lot of use. Natural grass still requires, you know, it'll have to be replaced or, and/or maintained through the years as well. So yeah, you're right, definitely at some point that synthetic turf has to get rolled up. And then the base should be good for what the base work, what I, what I mean by that is, I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but the, there's a lot of gravel underneath that's, that carpet that you see. So that stone base will be reusable. So when you're redoing this synthetic turf, you're rolling up the carpet in the infill, removing it, possibly reusing the infill in the new carpet that gets placed on the existing stone base that was constructed originally. Does that help? Anything else?
Well, I, I guess so, under this scenario though, so it is, it's sounding like, yes, you're agreeing that it's, it's not a full replacement cost, you're not starting from zero on the synthetic field, but some of it will need to be a full repla, or a partial replacement. Whereas in, in grass, I guess I was wondering, given that we're grading it and that we're putting this material in it, I, I was wondering, is, is aside from the annual divot replacement or, you know, the maintenance, which I understand is more for grass, aside from that maintenance cost, is there ever a point where the natural turf requires a, a full replacement or a partial replacement in somewhat comparison to a synthetic surface?
It would be minimal, I'll say. I think that the, the annual or the biannual maintenance is really, is really the expense that you should expect. You know, you'll have high wear areas, whenever you have a soccer field or any kind of play area, people will congregate in one area all the time and that area might need, you know, more maintenance. Eventually that, maybe you have to dig up a little bit and redo that section, but it's pretty minimal. I, I don't think, I don't foresee as drastic as rolling up synthetic turf and...
So you're saying it's not like we're going to have to like take the soil out, give more, you know, like you had mentioned the process of removing the soil, it's not that? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, pretty much, I guess, yes.
So I guess for me, I guess I'm looking at usability. I mean, that field isn't usable a lot. I mean, with, with the grass and with this drainage, how usable is it? Are we, are we still going to be, I mean, I'm sure it's going to alleviate a lot of flooding and a lot of drainage probably have, but is that field going to be usable like year-round still or are we going to be, there are going to be times that just because of the rain, because we're riverside, oh, we've got a lot of water, is there going to be times that we're not going to be able to use that?
So I'm not a soils scientist, but the, there's a few reasons why natural grass would have less usability than synthetic turf. Number one is exactly what you mentioned, you know, if there, if there's a rain event, you don't want to be sending the children out onto the field, you know, within hours after a rain has dissipated because, you know, the field will still be a little bit soggy and you know, as soon as you start making a footprint into that soggy, that creates a little divot which is holding water and it just perpetuates itself because now you're holding water and it just becomes a mud hole. And then when they mow it, the mower gets stuck in that hole and that makes a bigger hole. So, so there's definitely that where you, you want to limit after synthetic, synthetic turf, right after a rainfall, as long as there's not lightning damage or risk, you can send them out there to play on the, even if it's just after rainfall. Drainage, you know, with the, with the underdrains and the good soil, I feel comfortable that it'll, it'll drain, but it won't be drained quite at the rate. It's also on the sheet. One to eight inches per hour for natural grass, 15 inches per hour for synthetic turf. 15, I mean, at a certain point, it doesn't matter how fast because you just can't get that much rain per hour, 15 inches per hour, we'd have a lot of issues. So don't let that mislead you to think that synthetic turf drains twice as fast, it won't matter at a certain point. And then just the, the grass itself, when you step on the grass, it, it crimps the fibers over and that's bad for the grass and the grass actually needs time to rebound from, from that abuse that it's, that it's receiving. And we've done a lot of research into what is, what's good and what's bad for, for the grass. And flat shoes are actually much worse than cleats. It might seem counterintuitive because cleats have these angry-looking spikes that dig down, but because of that, you're actually not pressing down and crimping that fiber of the grass because you're, you're being, you're bridging over the grass so it's not being bent over as much. Whereas flat shoes, you're, you're definitely crimping that grass right now. We always say for synthetic turf fields, because you have the same effect, the, the feet are pushing down synthetic turf fibers, the band is the worst condition for the synthetic turf because they walk in lines on the same area and they have flat shoes, they don't have cleats. So yeah, for the same reason, natural grass, synthetic turf, both, the flat shoes are a worse condition. So because of that, that's another reason why you just have to give it some rest. You can't just be on it that much. And then finally, the, the season of the year. Synthetic turf, it depends on the year. You'll have, you'll have times where it's snow-covered, you don't want to be out there on it. But it's usually like 10 months of the year it's usable. In natural grass, it's not advisable to be on 10 months of the year for sure, depending on the year again, but usually if you can get eight months, it's probably, you're lucky with it.
So when you say the snow on it, is there a reason, like, because the kids are going to be, if they're snow kids, they're going to play in the snow. I mean, is there a reason why that, is, is it the same with grass you're saying or? I'm just, I'm just, I just don't understand, if you can help me understand that.
Yeah, so why wouldn't you want to be on it the two months of the year?
Or like, what do you say with snow, that's why I was just...
Oh, yeah. What's actually funny with the, with the synthetic turf is if, if you can get the fibers visible so that the sunlight can see it, it will, it'll capture that sunlight warm up enough that'll actually melt snow at a certain temperature until it gets, you know, 20 below. So and, and once it's clear, you can play on it, but when you have this, the snow pack on the field, you don't want to be letting, you don't want to be on it too much because you'll be cap, you'll be compacting snow into the synthetic turf and then you'll just have, it'll take longer in the spring. So it's not absolutely going to destroy it or anything, you know, having a few middle schoolers on it or anything. I can't believe I'm just starting synthetic turf, right?
Mike, I don't know if you could tell us, I mean, what, what, I know it's a practice field, not a full-size athletic field. I mean, is, is, is it anticipated that if we go either direction that we'd be able to use it more just because I know we've heard complaints about it being unusable so much? I mean, are there other activities that we would anticipate, anticipate it being used for that aren't now? I guess somebody was mentioning, you know, bands. I don't know that I can remember my kids were practicing band out there. They could, I just don't remember.
They, they do practice, they do one marching event, is it the Pet Parade or something? I've seen it out there on the blacktop.
But it's not the same as a high school.
Yeah.
Right, right.
It'd be a, a rare event.
That's my fault. I was just trying to use the...
We learned it was trying to be a U-10 soccer field. We did ask the PE department part of that question, you know, what size field they need for soccer and they said they kind of play wherever they can go and be. So they don't play on like a regulation size and even different competitions are different size fields. I think it would be used though more for practice and probably not games, right, Ryan?
Yeah.
It's just not quite big enough for probably middle school soccer games.
It's basically a field.
PE class, I think is the, the strong, would be the strong, you know, use. That's what we're kind of use.
Yeah, because we do not have a significant number of outdoor sports teams at Hauser.
I'd wonder as well, particularly talking about how packed snow would be bad for turf as opposed to grass. And it wasn't said, maybe it's just as bad for grass, but I know that...
It's not good for grass either.
Yeah.
I know, I know one of my, my kids in, in elementary school, a different elementary school, one of his favorite parts of winter is, you know, it's, it's snowy, there's impacted snow outside. Bring your snow pants, we're going outside for recess today. And I mean, I'm wondering if that, and maybe it's not enough really to, to matter.
Well, you know, what happens at Central is they play on the blacktop pretty much always. I mean, you know, K and one have recess out in that front play yard area, but what we had talked about would be that the, the field, regardless of the material, would, we would work out through scheduling that the middle of the day would really be for Central students. So they would have, again, if we were to build the playground structure and the field, they would have both for their lunch recess time. And then Hauser would have it really probably on either side of the Central lunch for outdoor PE classes. So I think, I mean, it would get heavily used relative to...
I don't think we need to worry about the snow issue because this, you know, like that happens occasionally and, you know, it's bad for both. The kids have to play somewhere, so they're going to play there, so that's just part of where and here, you know, like, for me.
Before we go to synthetic turf, real quick, natural grass. Ah, I had one more thing, it'll come to me. Synthetic turf, that's the, that's the middle column or the, the darker hatch that you see, that, that dark hatch is, is gravel. So this is looking at a cross-section through the field and on the side, you'll see it kind of gets deeper. at a cross-section through the field. And on the side, you'll see it kinda gets deeper. And that's because that's where the, the circular pipes would be running in and out of the, the screen. And the hydroway, the under drain, would be laid on it flat again. And it would go to that sideline and it would drain the water. After it percolates through the synthetic turf, through the stone, it would get to the hydroway panel drain. And that brings it to the sidelines, into circular pipes, and then that drains it away.
So it's under the entire surface?
Yes, yes. Entire surface. At the, in the middle there, it's probably six to nine inches thick of gravel. And then, and then the synthetic turf carpet on top of that.
So gravel, the hydroway.
Sorry. Hydroway, gravel, synthetic turf. So the hydroway panel drains on the, on the substrate or on the clay. And that is what really allows us to drain so quickly. Because it just, it comes through the surface of the, of the carpet, just soaks right through. And, and then it's, it's brought away through the stone like a French drain, as well as through the panel drains. And then you, you can see there's still maintenance. It's not like it's maintenance-free. You've still gotta go through and sweep. Because you might get little debris, whether that's natural leaves, twigs, or it could be unnatural. Sunflower seeds, gum, you know, anything like that. It has to get swept. So they basically, they just pull, have a tractor and they pull a sweeper behind it. And the tractor should be a relatively new tractor. Ideally, a tractor that is dedicated to doing the synthetic turf field. So that you don't have an old one that's leaking oil. And not that the district would have that. But it, you know, it gives, just gives you a better, you know, you don't wanna be having a very million-dollar field and then having oil drip onto it. So there's two things that that tractor will do. It'll pull the sweeper. It'll also have a deep, deep tying aerator. So that has basically fingers that are weighted down and it's dragged through the, through the infill. So that it kinda churns it up, keeps it loose and soft. So it doesn't get too compacted over time. But it also gets any, any debris that's fallen deep into the roots, it brings it to the surface so that it can be swept away, swept and, and removed. There will be some maintenance, some replacement of that infill. That infill seems like, especially when the field is new, that the students will be picking through it and filling their pockets or whatever else with it. And, and you will find though, whatever the infill is, you'll find it propagating into, into the locker rooms or into the, into the school. So I think that the, the rubber, you know, the standard SBR rubber, you've all heard of that, happy, it, it tends to get brought into the school more. Just because it, it sticks via static electricity or it's more of a, you know, attraction for the children to bring. Cause it bounces like a rubber ball. But other infills will come in, but not to the same extent with the...
And other infill options are, I think we mentioned cork.
Yeah. There's, there's a lot. There's a lot.
So there's many different options.
There's, there's several, yeah, yeah. Several man-made options, several rubber options. And, you know, including SBR rubber or EPDM rubber, which is basically the same as a tire, except it was never a tire. So it was a roof membrane or some other product. I always say it's, there's cork. You, I think you said cork?
I did.
Coconut. And then there's corcanut, which is a mixture of the two. And there's any number of man-made particles that, that are used. Yeah, olive cores, walnut shells, which they say are non-allergenic. But this is school and I don't think, I mean, you know, if you came within 100 yards of the school with a peanut butter sandwich, you'd get tackled. So I don't know if I'd be proposing walnut, any kind of tree nut on the field. The rock fill, has, has the board heard about the, the wood, wood fibers? Anyway, I got a little sample package in here. But I think that, I think that any natural material like the, like the olive cores is probably the most environmentally friendly you could go with synthetic turf. I do think you get significantly more use out of the synthetic turf, like I said. The, the, I don't know if you've heard the, the report that the synthetic turf is hotter. It's a hotter field to, to be playing on. I absolutely think that that is true. So obviously, it's more of a concern during the summer months. But it really goes by the sunlight. So if it's overcast, if it's a sunny day, that field will be significantly warmer than the ambient air or surrounding areas. But as soon as a cloud passes by, you could, you can, you can literally just feel the temperature dropping. It's just because it's that sunlight beaming, beaming down onto the synthetic turf, it's absorbing that energy and it's, it's radiating, radiating it outwards. So that, that is, that is something that I absolutely think is, is a, a negative or a con for the synthetic turf. More of a concern if you're, if you're using it in the summer months, obviously. I still didn't think of what that natural grass thing was, I was gonna say. Any questions?
In, in terms of the different surfaces, and again, we've seen folks come to us with, with studies. And I'm trying to remember something. It was University of Massachusetts Lowell, I think. Was that it? There, there seemed to be several studies referencing back from this one area. And there seemed to be industry studies on the other side refuting that. I mean, I guess this is your business. So I'm, I'm assuming, you know, you, you have a decent idea on those studies and how they're working in reality or how they relate to reality. I don't know if there's anything you can comment on that.
Right. I think, I think that the best way to put it, again, I'm not a scientist, but the reports are. The, I'm gonna use the word accusations, I guess. So there's accusations that certain things are negative. And then the EPA has answered a lot of those. Research it themselves. And I say EPA because the synthetic turf, you know, companies have also researched it themselves. But they're the ones paying the bills. So I don't even wanna mention them. But IPA had, the EPA has reviewed the accusations and they've found no correlation. So to me, that, that holds more weight than either side. Cause I, the only thing I, we could probably agree on is neither side is probably 100% truthful. I shouldn't say that, right?
You can say that.
Venue. Fourth right, we'll say. But, so, having said that, others, California, there's states that aren't allowing SBR rubber to be used at all anymore. Now, I'm not saying it's based on science. It could just be based on, you know, the perception of, you know, the, the public. So, so I think you're doing the right thing by, you know, considering other options other than SBR rubber, which is the, you know, the industry standard. Or was the industry standard. I think it still is, but it's, it's on its way out.
And it is the fill that people have had the objection to or the concerns for, right? It's not the...
I think so, yeah.
Well, there's been talk, there's some, there've been some comments in the literature that the blades of grass are made out of some kind of plastic. Therefore, there's a perception that that represents risk as well. Mostly it's been about the fill.
The infill, yeah. Cause it's loose, right?
Right.
It's loose, small.
Yeah, there's also for elementary school kids ingesting it. I think that was mentioned as well.
They'll also eat wood chips.
I, I know. Definitely know.
There was also, and I just, I'm more providing information than necessarily saying that this is my own thought. There was some commentary about bacteria infections and other things that more easily live in the synthetic material versus regular grass. But I don't know if you've had the ability to speak to that.
Again, I'm not a scientist. But, yeah, right, yeah. But there are studies that say that the natural grass, it's in there. But the natural grass, the microbes that live in natural grass kill it. So, so that's, there's definitely increased opportunity for those types of infections in synthetic turf. So with the, the high school or, or professional level, that's why they, they, they'll clean the, if there's a, a blood or any kind of bodily fluid in an area, they'll, they'll hose it down and they'll spray it to clean it. And then it just drains down. But they're, they're actually treating those areas, those problem areas.
Is any of that by any chance mitigated or reduced with natural fill?
The, I think to some degree. I don't know to what degree. Yeah, I, I can say yes. But to some degree, it's, it's better. One more thing I'll say with synthetic turf. I'll say one more thing, one more thing, one more thing, 35 minutes, but...
We appreciate your one more thing.
So, training of the, of the users is, is important too. Just to make sure that they're not spitting, excessive spitting on the, on the surface. It's not good for synthetic turf, you know. I don't know if there's a lot of students chewing tobacco out here, but you know.
I hope not.
Spitting and gum or candies, lollipop falling into it. It could be a real mess to, to remove it from the, you know, when it's entangled with fibers, the, the fibers from the synthetic turf, the grass fibers, if you will, and the infill. You know, it's, it's a mess to clean it up. Whereas with natural grass, you just let it rot and it would, you'd never know it was there.
Might be a silly or tummy question, but just, I know also, like visually, when I think about a synthetic turf, I think of kind of like bright colors and school logos kind of on it. As opposed to kind of the look and feel of the, of the Riverside community with that more natural look. So does synthetic turf or any of these other fillings provide for a look that is more easy to mimic the natural look?
Yes. Some have different, different tones of green in it. So you might have a darker and a lighter green intermixed randomly. So it's not, sometimes synthetic turf, they might actually go out of their way to make it look better than nature. Because they want it to look, you know, so they'll have a darker green, a swath, like a 10-foot swath of darker green. Or between the, the 10-yard markers, they, they do this a lot. Where they have 10 yards of dark green, 10 yards of light green, 10 yards of dark green. So it looks like it was mowed in a certain way. But it's almost like they're going out of their way to make it not look natural. But there are, there's some options that do look more natural. So they got more, you know, different texture to it. Different turf companies have different amounts of fiber. You know, they'll have more fiber, you know, grass, fake grass strands than others. So that, obviously that makes it look more natural, the more, the more fibers there are.
My yard, if you just draw some creeping Charlie's on it. And thank you. That's helpful to visualize.
There's a lot of landscaping companies that are doing it now. Can't think of any around here. But they'll, they'll put it in medians. Because they just can't get grass to grow there because of the salt. The salt from the roads, the heat from the, from the streets. So they put synthetic turf in the medians. So that it's gra, it's green. But it's, you know, they'll actually go out of their way to make a little hump and leave a little hump in it. So it's not perfectly flat. They'll kind of try to...
Natural.
To follow a natural terrain to it. So they'll actually go out of their way to kind of make it imperfect. Just for, just to make it look a little bit more natural, you know. So, wouldn't you know it, I still don't remember what that... You've heard enough?
This is super helpful.
Yes, very much so.
And thank you for, it's even-handed, which we appreciate.
Yeah.
Or I appreciate. So thank you.
I designed it, I get paid if it's natural grass or synthetic turf. So I have no vested interest in either one. So, yeah. Hopefully that came across that I'm trying to be fair.
It is.
Definitely.
Do we have this slide? Something like you found?
Yes.
Light Park renovation or, yeah, renovation.
Oh, I was looking under the, oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I was looking in the wrong spot. So I was like, well...
You just moved that over, right? Okay, that's why I didn't see it.
I still don't see it. So maybe I just need to log out.
We got this additional information this afternoon. Thanks to DLA for getting it to us this afternoon. I know it was input in front of all of you just this evening, hard copy. And then also Kathy was, because it includes the auditorium, Blight Park and Central Hauser. So Kathy's been separating out PDF to get it into the right section of the board.
So, thank you. We wanted to bring some more information to the discussion. So we'll continue to do that. And if there's other things that specifically that you'd like to see, then we can, you know, try to address those. I'm assuming we're moving on to Blight Park. Okay. Just wanted to give a little update here on our progress for the auditorium repurposing project. These slides are really small. So I'll, I'll explain what we've, what we've been talking about.
You also have hard copy in front of you.
Okay, great. So we've been talking about art and music in the lower level of the auditorium and what that might look like. Some of the challenges that that might represent in terms of acoustics and how that renovation and that floor plan might look. And so what you see here, and this suggestion came up in one of our community engagements, I think by a staff member. We were meeting in the library and I said, what about putting the art room up here? And we talked about the, the need for natural light, for art, and how we like to design that into spaces. So we started to investigate that and really started to make a lot of sense to bring art up to where library is currently at Blight Park. And I'll, I'll show you that in a moment. And then look at bringing the library down to the lower level. The adjacency of the library and the music room acoustically makes a lot more sense. Libraries, as they're evolving and developing, are much more open, less quiet spaces. And so opening that up to be an auditorium or performance space would really be a lot easier than doing that with an art room that had a sink, storage, drying racks and all those items. So what you'll see here is really a similar looking floor plan. But instead of art down in the lower level, you'll see library to the left. The other piece that came out of some of the discussions with the administration was, how can we squeeze out another itinerant room that would help alleviate, you know, some of the stress that they're finding in their programming? And so, again, this really lends itself to allowing for that. Oftentimes, you'll see breakout rooms in libraries or small testing rooms, you know, so it can serve a couple of different functions. Not only the library, but also, again, an itinerant room. These, this floor plan is very similar to what you've seen before. We'd look at bringing openings, new openings into the east elevation. So bringing some natural light down into the music room as well as the library. And then all your storage would be along that east wall. I'm gonna attempt my, my laser from this distance. But in, in this plan as well, we have a lift that would serve the main level, as well as the gymnasium level, the lower library level. And then also, there's another level, a couple of steps down for storage as well. I know there's an issue with the floor scrubber and where to put that. So this would allow them to be able to store that down to lower level. So I wanted to give you a sense of what that space would start to look like. So this right now, you'd be, obviously, there's no furniture in here. You would, this is standing in the library, looking into the music room, as it would be open for a performance space. What you see on the, the right there are the library stacks. So we measured what's existing there. And there's ample space here to, to fit what they have. And I think what they perceive for the future. they have, and I think what they foresee for the future. You see to the left there, that itinerant room. Again, this gives us the opportunity to create a lot of transparency into that room, but also through that room, so it can bring natural light into that itinerant space, but also into the neighboring ramp and corridor. So that's just another view coming down into that space. This was the ramp on the other side of itinerant. Again, from this side, you're getting natural light into that space, views into the itinerant room and then in through to the library.
So you actually have windows on both sides of the itinerant room?
We do, yeah.
So light comes in from the east.
Correct.
Through the library, through the first window of the itinerant room, and then from the itinerant room to the corridor.
Exactly, exactly. So this is that, that same space, but now we're standing in the music room looking into the library. So we've got those, those two stairs, I'll call them, our learning stairs. They're deep enough for sitting and congregating if there's a performance, but it creates separation between those, the library and the music room if you wanted to close those off. If you noticed in plan, we would put an operable wall in between those two spaces. So again, you have the flexibility to open it up for a performance or close it off when music is happening. On, on the left there, you see, a little bit faded, but the, the openings that we would punch into the east wall. I'll show you later in a rendering, they mimic the, the windows that are above in the gymnasium, which is going to be important to preservation. So we'll be engaging them about, about those and that configuration. And then that would also be your teaching wall. So you'd have, you know, your traditional marker board, plenty of storage, very similar to what we did at Hollywood, multipurpose room. We then use that as a music room, so you've got lots of storage for the ORF program that I think Blithe Park is, is doing here as well.
And movable walls have evolved in use that they're easier to use, it's one person can do it.
They are easier to use. This, because of the span of this wall and the height, which would only be about nine feet, it would not be a cumbersome large wall, it would be an easy wall to operate. I mean, obviously you probably want to staff only to do that, but yeah, it would be an easy operation. There is an electric option, that's typically for larger walls. This, it adds more things to maintain, and this is a fine size to, to do it manually. As we move to the upper level, we have talked about dining and that that would be in the gymnasium, so we wanted to support that effort. You can see on the left there, you have the lift that does go all the way up to gymnasium level, exits directly into gymnasium and dining. On the right of the plan, in yellow, we would renovate that storage room so it would support the storage of the tables and chairs that would be required for dining. We would then renovate the existing kitchen to make it more sort of dining, so you've got hand washing, but then it would also double as your PTA kitchen that I know is an important function that they have here. And then we look at the existing library to the lower of the, the plan, that is now our, our art room. So it's got transparency on either side of that room, bringing lots of natural light. We have looked at the, the itinerant room adjacent to that, and it's really a little bit, there are a few services that are not required there, there's a sink, some built-in casework. So we feel like we can provide appropriately sized storage there, make that room a little bit smaller, and then take a little bit of that square footage for art, for sink and some, some added storage. This is just a view, wanted to show a view from the existing lobby. This is looking toward the lower level entrance and at the new lift. So how that configuration would work, this would be, obviously serve the main level, go down to the lower level, up to the gymnasium as well, and then to the right there, those double doors would be into the art room. Now the pretty pictures. These would be the openings that we would propose. They would mimic the same module that we have existing in the gymnasium, which I think would be appealing to preservation. And again, they would be that, that wide sort of ribbon window that would bring natural light. We looked at other elevations, we really wanted to maximize how much light we would get into the space, and it doesn't make sense with parking on the west side, and it doesn't make as much sense with the north elevation as well.
It's actually better from a security standpoint as well, because on that west, west side, northwest side, you have the parking lot, but then there's also a bunch of shrubbery and the ground actually goes up a little bit, so it's a little more isolated.
We studied that. I mean, really the natural light that we'd get in there with the cars parked fairly close to the building, it's not a good use of the money for the light that you would get down there. The one thing, if I could back up just a minute that I didn't point out, but I'd like to. If we look at the far wall, it's tough to see in this rendering, we'll show it better in later renderings. The intent is to reuse that wood wall that is now on the east wall and move that to the end of the music room. So those are, again, in large overlapping panels, if you're familiar with the auditorium as it is today, we kind of create that same language so that you'd have, again, large overlapping panels at the back of the, the stage for performance and then the back of the music room when it is operated in that way.
So I did have a question, Joel, you might know this, but because we're very, putting windows in, well, how's that going to affect, because I know the big issue during an addition, we had to go through for sort of preservation, how's that going to affect the whole sort of preservation when we put windows in?
We still, anytime we've, and Ryan will add to what I say, but we still have, we have to go, once we touch the building envelope, the exterior, we are obligated for their review. So what Ryan is saying is trying to find an elevation, these window punchouts that best will satisfy them, that we are not violating the integrity of this look and feel too much.
Yeah, correct. I mean, if you remember back, we had some preliminary conversations with preservation, and Charlie indicated that, we talked about an addition, which we knew was a much more lengthy involved process, and then we also talked about just exterior windows, which do need to be reviewed, but would be a shorter process.
Okay, that's, I guess, what I was trying, I didn't know if the addition and this would be like the same.
No, no, completely different, yeah. So, I mean, this does require review, and we're ready to submit for that, the end of this month, to be reviewed in June. If everybody is, you know, liking the, you know, the direction we're headed.
With the hope that because this is a lower key change, that, that's, that makes preservation more likely to say, this, this isn't, we're, we're good with this.
Yeah, it's in keeping with the, the design intent, the original design intent of the building, which is what they're charged with. So I think we, if you remember back, we, we went through that process with the addition, so.
Doing, doing so much work in terms of putting in the, the windows in the lower levels, that's not going to disturb the, I'm trying to think what they're calling it, the outdoor amphitheater that's there?
No, we wouldn't be touching that, there would be no work on that side of the building at all.
And I guess here, I'm glad that you mentioned that you're using the wood there, because I guess this question I was going to have is, you mentioned, you, you call it a stage, it's, it's, in this view, it's kind of hard to see it as anything that, but an end of a wall.
So we're not, we're not showing, and you're right, we're not showing any stage, if you will. The thought for this was so it could be flexible, they'd be mobile risers, so that would be your stage in effect, and it would be all the way at the end of this room. So when it's music room, it might just be an open room, but they would have plenty of storage to bring those mobile risers in and create one larger stage or individual, you know, platforms for, for music class.
I know there, you know, talk about nostalgia over the auditorium itself, but I know there's, you know, nostalgia over the library space as well, and I think more specifically like the wooden murals and wood paneling, so would that stay in there in the art room?
Yeah, I think it's.
And utilize the spaces that have the shelves of, you know, where the art items would go or sinks or what have you?
The thought is that that art would definitely stay in the art room, and it's now better suited in the art room. And I think it's definitely, it's got a lot of character and it's important to the school, so, and that's, that is part of the design, and part of what I think makes sense to have art up there. The shelves would go away, you know, we're going to use that for square footage and provide other storage and pinup space.
And, and music and library could conceivably happen at the same time, and that would work out?
Yeah, music, yeah.
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 So, we know that.
Kazmir has been through, like, this, we've been, we talked about this in Facilities Advisory, we talked about it specifically with Kazmir, just around scheduling, and she thinks it's probably easier to schedule library and music, it's much separate from each other, but if they did overlap, that, that portable wall would be down and they would be able to work as independent, you know, classes programs going on.
We know that having two programs with an operable wall right next to each other, you sacrifice some acoustics. The STC, I'm sorry, the STC rating of the wall that we would propose is around 50, which is pretty good. It's not as good as a, as a hard wall, but it, you know, our, our libraries, again, aren't the quiet spaces that they used to be. So that's why these two programs make a little bit more sense next to each other. Again, Kazmir was comfortable that they could schedule it to make it work.
You even referred it to the music.
I was there recently to read a book to my son's class, and definitely it was pretty loud in terms of participating in the book, but then also checking, you know, kids got to check out books afterwards, and, and maybe, maybe that's still part of the program where folks are, kids are sitting down and having quite reading in the library, but I don't know, perhaps as you mentioned, it's maybe not as much as it used to be.
Well, I think that we would, I think Kazmir liked this vision, what we don't see here that you'll see in, in later development is flexible seating, probably some flexible mobile stacks, you know, similar to Ames, they've got sort of that spline shaped bookcase. So things like that make this space be able to be reconfigured, excuse me, and, you know, just adds to the flexibility.
Just the last question I have with regards to the windows, I, I love the idea and the concept, but I'm wondering, are there any potential safety concerns with having ground level windows or relates to either vandalism or even flooding and water coming in, being that it's ground level?
I think that the concerns are the ones that you already are thinking about. Are they as safe as windows that are, you know, four or five feet? No, they aren't. But these would be fixed windows, it wouldn't be operable, I know that's a discussion we've had with other additions that we've done, but because they are lower to the ground, they would be fixed windows, so I think they'd be safe in that regard.
And the ground does slope a little bit away from the school on that side of the building.
It does, yeah. So, yeah, in terms of the water.
Drainage would be manageable.
I mean, it wouldn't be a concern that water would seep into, into and through that window.
So Ryan, this is, I mean, new business discussion, and we wanted to make sure we were continuing to bring sort of how the, the plan is kind of evolving to the board, but then the next step is that we would seek a different MOU, a new MOU, right?
Correct.
We should just explain what that next, what the MOU would represent, what the next part of the process would be.
Yeah, next step would be approval that we want to take this out to bid. So it would be generations of, generation of construction documents, which would be more detailing, structural detailing, HVAC, electrical, in order to get competitive bids.
And that MOU is in our current, is in the current board book, and you have a note at the bottom of the tentative project schedule saying, "Schedule developed for, specifically for remodeling scope project presented in November 2020, 2020, sorry, 2021. If there's significant delay in decision, a revised schedule will need to be developed." Are we still within that reasonable schedule where you have construction documents from May to November of '22 and then bid in end of this year? Is that still reasonable?
That is still reasonable. The next step with the approval of the MOU would be preservation, that's the first step in the village process. But yes, to answer your question in short, we are on track to take this out to bid at the end of the summer, early fall. We'd like to get numbers back before the end of the year and then talk about that construction schedule. I think Ramash has mentioned, this is not a two-month project, so we're either looking at starting early before the end of school or, you know, bridging into school for 2023 in the fall.
And then in a little while, Ramash is going to have a little bit of discussion on additional elements of the Blithe Park work, but this also includes new boilers.
Correct, there are some maintenance items that have been discussed before that makes sense to include in this project, so you get some economy of scale and better competitive bids.
So there's no action needed tonight, just, you know, I think sort of an understanding that the, the project's changed with the music library being the, the purpose in the lower level, being able to carve out some itinerant space, and then Joel, as you pointed out, we talked about some cost estimates, that the boiler project would be part of it, and the, the site, potentially, and that's what Facilities Advisory talked about, was in, you know.
Right.
Is there any way to break that up or modify that anyway, just because we're in a circular, escalating costs? Estimates.
Any other questions I can answer?
It's been a lot of good information tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got the idea? The grass, the natural.
The grass, okay, yes.
Just going back to it, there's a lot of different varieties of grass, so there's more robust, the more robust grasses you choose, those, they'll stand up better to that traffic, but then they get a little bit more prickly, so they might be a little bit thicker and not the most comfortable thing to, to fall on, you know, and then so we'll have to, if we go with synthetic, natural grass, we'll have to go and find something that kind of fits both, you know, it's kind of a happy medium of, we don't want to have something that's too abrasive on, on the, on the students, but we don't have something that's too delicate and it falls apart every time you, you, you breathe on it, so that was it.
All right, appreciate it.
Yeah, you probably need these back.
I have a little turf.
Yeah, thanks.
I think we want to talk about the budget for the Blithe Park project, so I believe that the board had seen numbers previously, which were significantly lower, but at that time we were only looking at the two-section project and renovating the lower level and upper level. So we thought that we could combine some of the previous projects that had been postponed. For example, the boiler replacement was required this year, but we pushed it because we are doing the masonry project, and so we said that since we're doing this renovation project at Blithe, why don't we add that back into this? And the boiler that's required, I mean, we're talking about some high efficiency boilers, we're looking at bringing them in, just come to the lower level, there's a, it's a bit tricky to get it in, so they, they cost more from that, from that perspective. The lead time is pretty extensive on boilers these days, it runs anywhere from four to six months. So it made sense to merge the two projects and get it under one single contract, because there are elements of mechanical electrical plumbing for the renovation project, which would be tied into the boiler project too. So it made sense, that's, that was how we combined the, the first two. And then we had the site work project, which was from two years ago, which we hadn't executed at the end of the addition that we built in '21. So DLA had pointed out that this work could be pushed out, we didn't do it this year, and unfortunately, because of the circumstances that we face, where price of boiler has gone through the roof, transportation's gone through, asphalt, we're paying a big premium. So that project, which we were looking at approximately $200, $250,000, has now crossed to the $450,000. has now crossed to the $450,000 range. It's just a bad timing. I mean, we need to do that work out there in the two parking lots, north and the south. So we said, there's no time like now. I mean, we could keep on pushing it out, but it made sense that when we are doing renovation projects, let's finish all the projects at Blythe and call it today. At least that way, it's all complete. So that's why you see the three merged budgets come together in the estimate that you have in your board package. And it shows approximately $4 million that's required for the entire project. Now, one of the things is that, yes, we can tighten up our budget. I mean, as the construction documents come, we are right now only at, we've done a concept estimate. I mean, I thought it's better off to show a higher number now than to show something at three and then come back and ask for four. We can trim the number down, we can make alternates, we can look at other options. I mean, we've worked really hard to bring the number down, but I just wanted to bring the, make the board aware that it's a potentially a $4 million project. There is work to be done out here. And it's not going to get cheaper over time. We can keep kicking the can. I mean, the boiler has to be done, the renovation project has to be done. So why not do the site work too and do all the three projects? It's not going to get cheap.
And you've also put in a significant contingency.
I have a contingency in there too, yes, exactly. I have a construction contingency as well, which we're holding because right now, prices are rising at approximately 11% in the Chicagoland area. And, I mean, yes, in a case of a recession hitting, prices do tend to come down, but labor never comes down. Labor prices always escalate because they are built in escalators and contracts that are there. And we may see a blip, but we catch it, it'll be great, like what happened in 2019 when we built out Ames. You know, we had a luck of a draw when COVID hit. So the same thing can happen here too. But, you know, I can't predict what the costs are going to be when we bid it. But on the other hand, when DLA finishes the construction documents, I'll be working hand glove with them to make sure that we have a tighter set of documents. We'll try and bring the number down as low as possible. We're not going to try and escalate it, but I just wanted the board to be aware that there is a chance that we're going to hit $4 million.
So right now, this estimate reflects your best knowledge on where prices are going to be.
Correct.
Plus.
It's got contingencies, it's got any fees.
Contingency and escalation for inflation or what have you.
Correct, there's inflation number as well, yes.
So I can also tell you from a financial perspective, I mean, Jim has already taken a look at this. It's because we've been putting so much aside and the revenues have been a lot higher than we've, it's really not affecting the budget significantly. And we are still, it's still like the 10-year, and these are just still preliminary numbers, but still.
Definitely would love to see that.
10 years, oh, but I mean, it's not going to be as significant because we've been paying so much money.
I would definitely love to see those projections updated next time we're talking about this. But yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Any questions with regards to the cost estimate?
It's definitely much higher than the last ones we were seeing. And I'm guessing this is, because I'm trying to think, was it the one with the atrium was the most expensive? So we're definitely not hitting that.
If you'd done a standalone addition, it would have been very expensive and almost impossible to get through reservation too. So this is actually the most practical project that we can accomplish in the timeframe that we've set. It's actually a good, it's a good timeline in the sense that over the next six months, we can put the project out to bid, get our numbers. By December, we award the contract. That gives us a four-month buffer to place orders for long lead time items like the boiler, the elevator, electrical panels, the things that are going to cost time. So we can get that going. We'll have a schedule overrun, maybe we start early or we end late. We have to take a look at that, what's most practical. We'll discuss this with Keshmira as well, so.
And you think with the construction contract approval, as you just said, of February 2023, that allows all those lead time items to be?
February would be late. I would say December, Jan is what would be the ideal because as the contractors come out of the holiday cycle, we want to hit them right there. You know, in January, we want them to start purchasing. In fact, we probably even have a clause of pre-purchase in there before construction starts. As far as they got into under contract and they have their insurance certificates, bonds in, we can try and get expedite the boiler, for example, elevators. We have to place the order and, you know, these days, almost every manufacturer is asking for 50% upfront. And prices have skyrocketed in these fronts. I mean, elevators, I'm not seeing anything less than 30, 35% over the last two years.
So thinking ahead to June, so it looks like we would want to look at new financial projections with, you know, the potential Blythe project sort of with increased costs added to that. In terms of additional facility conversations, I mean, this has been thorough. Appreciate, you know, the thoughts around artificial turf and grass, the cost, the changes to Blythe. We've covered a lot. Are there other questions that the board has? So as we think about like a June, one committee, the whole meeting around both finance and facilities, because the two tie in together. Are there other particular questions, requests, thoughts in terms of what additional information we should bring?
One thing that comes to mind for me was, and I'm not sure how well informed the Blythe community was on kind of the initial plan, but outside of this meeting, has that community been updated on the change to like library, you know, the room now being library and music as opposed to hard music, but just for communication purposes? I don't know, again, how much was communicated under the original plan.
Right, it's a great question. No, we really wanted to bring it to the board first. So we took it to Facilities Advisor, you know, met with Keshmira, took it to Facilities Advisor. So really bringing it to all of you for a sense of like, is this the direction we would want to go? And then in which case we could do some additional community sharing. I know we get into kind of a funny time of year, but as we talked about, this project isn't for this summer. Project is for summer of '23. So we'd have time even in the fall, so then we could potentially even show it open house. You know, there's different ways we can probably.
I just wasn't sure how much had been shared, that there'd have to be resharing or clarification.
It's a good question, yeah.
Probably really just the, to discuss the fact, the library, as you noted, the library and art room switch. Everything else is consistent with what DLA has previously presented at the morning coffee and the afternoon.
Right, the idea of the auditorium being repurposed.
Right, that's what I mean. Really, the new element is the room change. The rest of it is very similar.
But to answer your question, I don't know if anybody has anything else or could be useful.
I think that's definitely a good start.
We haven't done, to Steph's point, we haven't done more community engagement with the central Hauser because there's been so much to evolve here. And I'm just not, still not even sure we're ready for that.
Probably not. I was on the edge of saying, does enrollment matter at this point?
For which?
Well, and then we have a drop off in kindergarten enrollment.
I mean, and it's, as I said, it's a question I have. I mean, it's a drop off for now compared to May, May of previous years. I don't, I don't know. I mean, we could get everybody coming in in July and August to register and realize that we have no fewer students, potentially even more. That's what's, there's such an unpredictability to this.
But let's, but even, but even let's say that there is a drop this year. Are we going to let one year sort of dictate what we've been, sort of what we've seen as the trend? I mean, we've been working towards this for so long, we're so far down this path right now.
I suppose the only advantage would be if at, sorry, at Blythe, if there was a lower enrollment, that would give more flexibility towards the construction because we would not be quite so needy of that extra room.
Right.
That would be a benefit. It would mean that it would be a better time to do construction as quickly as possible then. Is there any, sorry, question for, do you think there's going to be any issue with permits, specifically stormwater? Because we're touching the parking lots and it's still the same footprint.
I talked to Ryan about that. So we are going to actually present this as a maintenance project whereby we just resurfacing. That's why I said we can trim some numbers down, you know, so we're not going to pull up any new elements out here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ramash.
So I'm thinking at committee, the whole under facilities, we probably wouldn't have any new information. It's really would be more the financial component of the wood line.
And approval, if the board agrees, of this MOU.
Right, which I would do to the board, yeah.
Right. The next business. Okay. All right. Then that takes us next to public comment. I think I saw one come in.
Yes, you did.
All right, I will read that here. This is from Glenn Placa. Public comment is, "Has the idea been looked at that a parking garage may be three stories high to allow for adequate parking and giving play area more space? So proper-sized sports field could be built, allowing students to have a home field right by the school building. I know the school is short on space and landlocked with no chance of buying additional space as was done at Ames. Just a thought, a former student, Glenn Placa." Any additional public comment? All right. All right. Everybody cool to hang out for another half hour? All right, no, you're not. All right, fair enough, I hear you. All right, so then that's it. Future meeting dates, May 18th, 2022, regular business meeting. I'm sorry?
That's today.
Yeah.
Oh, mine is, okay, yeah, you're right, it is. Oh, well. Future and another. So, okay, we'll go June 1st, 2022, committee of the whole meeting, 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room at Central. June 15th, 2022, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the LRC of Hauser. The board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00. And if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.